I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Caffey, can you lead us in the pledge, please? Moving on, 4.01, the public comment session. Alrighty. Moving on to 4.02, approval of the agenda. We need a motion to approve the agenda for the August 25th, 2025 meeting as presented.
So moved, Pangborn. Second, Nieman.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say yes. Yes. Opposed, say nay. Consent agenda items 5.02 through 5.10.
So moved, Pangborn.
Second, Sharon.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for 6.01, new business, to approve the financial statements for July 2025 as presented.
So moved, Sharon.
Second, Nieman.
Good evening. I, uh, month of July really is a pretty boring month when it comes to financial statements. Revenues and expenditures are a little lower than normal, but we were in revenues for July just a little under 2 million. Local revenues, a big chunk of that came from Proposition C. We didn't have any local taxes come in in July, but a little over 200,000 in delinquent taxes. So Prop C, our first payment for FY '26, 648, 984. Calculated again on that weighted ADA and average membership combined. So the plan is for the state to get to 1,0495 per weighted membership and attendance, but they're not quite there yet. All based on that sales tax revenue as it comes in. That's been pretty strong in the last few years, so I would expect to see that do well again this year. We're at 7% year-to-date of our budget there as we made it through July. A little smaller amount, but relatively large for this month was revenue that came in from the other local revenue line. As many of you probably know, when it comes to McKinney-Vento, school districts are required to pay for transportation for homeless students, and then the corresponding district reimburses for that. So the 142,000 there was mostly revenue coming from other districts, their share of helping us to transport our homeless students. So that's about half of what we expected. That can be a difficult thing to track down, so encouraged to see that much of that revenue coming in already. Really small amount of county revenue there coming in from utilities. First formula payment of the year was on 6,900 SAT in July. That typically grows throughout the year. We're counting on getting to 7,145 SAT by the end of the year. It's what we've been promised. Didn't quite make it there last year, and so we're optimistic and hopeful that we'll get there this year. One thing to note, I think, in our formula payments, and we're going to watch this as time goes by. We are able to count either current year attendance or one of the two preceding years. We're two preceding years out now for our weighted ADA and membership. So that number will fall off as we transition into next year. So unless this is a great year for membership and ADA combined, we will see a reduction there in that number that we get to count as that number falls off. So we're, that's not unexpected, I think, as we've seen those enrollment numbers, you know, in a slight decline. This is reflective of that. Classroom trust fund, 212, 651. That's another one that can fluctuate greatly based on how many lottery tickets and how much gambling goes on. So, and one of the things that is not commonly known is they take that amount and subtract it from what they owe us in the formula anyway. So it's a little bit misleading. We always pull that number out, but it's really just part of the overall formula payment anyway. So FY '25 mileage is still being used on the transportation payment. So you've noticed probably the last few months that that payment is 76, 661. It takes until October for them to nail down those mileage numbers, and that's when we start getting that new amount of transportation. So that kind of continues over into the fall. Little bit of state revenue for ECSE for work that went on over the summer, 170,872. One thing to point out in regard to federal revenues, you probably noticed our Title IIA payment was a huge amount of the budget already. That's really just because we were paid late. That's money that we were owed for last year, based on services that were rendered last year, and we just received that in July. So we'll watch that budget amount probably exceed what was budgeted just because of that shift in the fiscal year. So operating expenditures were pretty normal, a relatively small amount. There was that ESIP payment that came out. That was probably the largest chunk of any one particular budget line, but again, not too remarkable. Last thing on my list was the self-funded insurance fund balance. We're a little over 1.5 million. Again, we talked last month about how that deposit would be pretty small as the payroll is much smaller in these two months, and we had just over $1 million in medical claims, so the fund balance, again, at 1.5 million there. So, any questions on any of those items?
Ms. Pangborn? Andrews? Ben? All those in favor of approving the financial statements for July 2025 as presented, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the strategic plan for 2025, 2026 as presented, 6.02.
So moved, Pangborn. Second, Hepburn.
Alright.
So Board, earlier this month at our work session, we reviewed the progress and data from the '24-'25 strategic plan and spoke to some of the focus areas that from that were developed for the '25-'26 plan, which we bring tonight for your approval. I want to acknowledge that we recognize this is a bit of a bridge year, as we have the fifth and final year of the current plan. Excuse me, and actually begin tomorrow with the approval of the RFP a little, few minutes ago, to move forward with writing the new plan, which we are very excited about, looking forward to 2031 already. Several of you have expressed concerns around this plan. I know that I've heard them in board meetings I watched last year, and even at the work session, while you acknowledge that there's consistency in the plan that we have developed, that you find some of the goals are a little bit confusing and how they change year-to-year and what goals we're actually using, especially when we're not necessarily seeing all the movement that we would like around our overall academic achievement, some of our subgroup achievement, and ultimately the disproportionality in some of our discipline. Those concerns are valid, and we share them as a team. We have spent our time together over the last six weeks talking about the plan and what we would like it to look like moving forward. Because this is the final year of the current strategic plan, we are not reinventing the plan. What we're bringing you tonight, you will see, is the same for goal areas, priority objectives, and the annual measures really remain the same as what they were in the past. What's changing, what we've shared with you tonight, are some of the specific action steps that we're looking at differently as we move forward this year. The team is not going to walk through every priority objective. We did more of that during the work session. Tonight, what they're going to do is, as they talk through the four areas, identify what are either some key differences this year or changes, or there were a couple areas where you expressed interest in learning a little bit more at the work session, and the team will touch on those as they go through the plan. And then what we'll do is we'll stop at the end of each of the four main areas and allow you to ask questions that we can hopefully answer for you. As I talk about the next plan, you know, we are really celebrating the success that's in there, but really centering our discussion on what does come next. We recognize that there is an opportunity to have more clarity in our academic goals and what metrics that we're using, and really to build in at the front end of the plan, what does that accountability and reporting mechanism look like? And I think that'll provide greater transparency to you as a board and to our community as we move into that next strategic plan, really being clear about what we're measuring from the start of that plan next year through the end. So like I said, as I said at the beginning, really thinking this about a bridge this year, allowing us to focus this year, but also prepare for the plan for 2031. So I'm going to turn things over first to Dr. Bailey and Dr. Granna, who will get us started.
Wonderful, thank you. One of the first things we want to make sure that we acknowledge for the board is that sometimes setting the goals and the percentages and looking at if it's a cohort or if it's the same grade level has been slightly confusing. And so we wanted to make sure that we point out that this school year, when possible, we've calculated any goals that we could based on cohort data and not based on a specific grade level, meaning that in previous plans, we might have set this year's fifth grade goal based on last year's fifth grade ending data. And instead, this year, we're basing this year's fifth grade goal on that same group when they were fourth graders in their spring data, so that things are rolling forward. That's not possible in every dataset. For example, tier-three students and their growth, maybe different groups of students every year. So we're not able to do a one-to-one in that situation, but when possible, we've tried to base this on cohort data as much as we could, and you'll see that especially in the academic and behavioral data throughout the plan. But again, just, there are some areas that we couldn't do it either based on the bands of grades or based on the assessment that's given. We wanted to make sure we acknowledged that for the board and for the community as well. And so that updated strategic, the long page that's like a Word document that has that update already made for you guys to review. So turn it over to Dr. Granna. What you'll see is we may be doing microphone shuffle sometimes with everything too, just based on the numbers of microphones that are available, but we'll be processing this information for the board and for the public.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Good evening to the board and our community. The first thing I'm going to talk about in priority objective 1.1 is I am going to focus on 1.1.2. Thank you. And PLCs. And oftentimes, I've given a response to questions. They're pretty, it sounds maybe oversimplified, where I will just say, well, the PLC will take care of that. So I thought it would be helpful to maybe go over a definition and really dive into the holistic approach, the data-driven approach, the systems that are involved, the way that the student is brought into the PLC work, the classroom, the teacher, the school, and then the district. So there's lots of ways that we're looking at this data, and the PLC process really supports that. So when we talk about professional learning communities, we're really talking about a mindset. It's a way of working together that keeps our students at the center of everything that we do. And so there are really three big ideas. One is a focus on learning. This ensures that all students are learning at high levels. The second is that collaborative culture piece, and probably most important, collective responsibility for the data and the learning and belonging of all of our students. And then results orientation. So making sure that our educators are focused on results. Evidence of student learning, that's student work, that's formative assessments, common summative assessments, that's our benchmark data, lots of different ways to collect evidence of student learning. So PLCs really are the way that adults in a school decide to act and to work together to ensure high levels of learning for all students. It's a commitment to continuous improvement, and it's where teachers collaborate around the curriculum, instruction, equity and inclusion, assessment, interventions, and also extensions of learning. Professional learning communities judge their effectiveness on the basis of results. So working together to improve student achievement becomes a routine work of everyone in the school. So PLC teams at every level across the district meet weekly to discuss the four guiding PLC questions, allowing them to respond to student needs and differentiate instruction in real time using student data from formative assessments to common summative assessments to our benchmark data, which we collect three times a year and use that data to drive our discussions as well. And to talk a little bit more about assessment and to talk a little bit more about data and what that process looks like is Ms. Lox. So I'll turn it over to her.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. So those four questions that Dr. Granna was referring to, the first question is what do we want all students to know and be able to do? And the second question is how do we know? And so that's really where the assessment piece comes in. How do we know? What evidence of learning do we have? And it's at that point that we're reviewing whether it's a work sample that all students have completed that we can look at together to look for evidence of learning, whether it's a more formal assessment that the team has written that centers around the standard that they've been teaching, or whether it's our benchmark assessment data, because it's timely at that time of the year that they're reviewing. But the beauty of the cycle is that they're able to use that data in the moment to then make instructional changes as quick as possibly the next day when they come back to school. So it is that continuous improvement cycle where we're teaching, we're asking ourselves what evidence of learning is there, and then we're making real-time decisions based on that in the moment.
Thank you, Ms. Lox. So last year, our leadership team focused on the book. We did a book study on clarity for learning, right? So we know when students clearly understand what they are learning, why it matters, and how to succeed. They become more engaged. They take ownership of their learning and achieve at higher levels. So this year, so focusing on moving forward for this year, we are going to engage in a book study on highly effective teams and a PLC at work, really helping us support our teachers in the classroom around those four guiding questions and making sure that we have those highly effective PLCs, because they really are the foundation of all of our work. We also will create a KSD PLC rubric, which I talked a little bit about last time as well during our work session. This really is going to help us universally define what highly effective PLCs look like. So our senior leadership team will take part in PLC fishbowls at every level, elementary, middle, and high. And then our rubric will be created around those observations, look-for's, and obviously best practice. Solution tree and a four are driving the research and the data behind the work that we're doing as well. I've also shared with you that we have a KSD PLC handbook. We will continue to use that handbook as a reference point for our teachers. We have also added a couple of items to that as well. More detailed information about setting clear goals, so how we measure those goals and what those goals look like. Also some protocols for how we're assessing and reviewing data as well. And then for the summer of 2026, I can't believe I'm saying that, but the summer of 2026, we are going to host our fifth PLC Summer Institute. This ensures there's really no gap in the learning of our leaders and also our PLC teams and guiding coalitions. So this really gives them the opportunity to expand their learning, grow their learning, and also for those who are new, kind of get caught up to speed and become leaders in their buildings and on their PLC teams. So that's a little bit about 1.1.2, and I'll speak to the others here a little bit later in the presentation as well. I'll speak to them right now. Okay. Talking a little bit more about 1.2.3, this comprehensive literacy plan. So moving from job-embedded coaching through the link to the literacy learning labs that I've spoken to you about as well. Those will be led by the link as well and support really whole group and grade-level team learning. We're going to focus on collective learning and shared practices across the classroom, across each grade level in every building, really creating that consistent and equitable experience for our students. In kindergarten through second grade, we're going to strengthen those foundational skills, again, based in the science of reading. And then we're going to also emphasize three through five, the vocabulary development and grammar instruction. Talking, I talked to you a little bit about Marzano's Six-Step Vocabulary Process, that explain, restate, show, discuss, reflect, and apply. And then also that grammar instruction. It's not just rules and mechanics, but it's really about effective communication. So this was also identified as an area of need in the middle school and specifically at the high school level to prepare students for the ACT. So we're really working on creating that alignment and continuity through our curriculum. So we are in development for ELA at the middle school level, and we are also in development for the high school as well. And we want to ensure there is a cohesive experience for our students, kindergarten through 12th grade. And we've even done some work around the early childhood experience as well and some letters training there also. So really even starting that as early as our youngest learners. Also, DESI has required that we are engaging in a literacy plan annual review. And the six domains that they want us to focus on with that review are leadership and sustainability, standards-based curriculum, intentional instruction intervention and enrichment assessment partnerships, and then that success-ready students and workforce development. And they want us to take our literacy plan and review it annually through those six domains. So we're looking forward to that work and putting together a KSD comprehensive literacy review committee this year as well. We want to continue with letters training. Last year was the first year of the three-year expectation that all K2 teachers are trained in letters. And as I shared last time, we have 63 teachers who have completed either year one or are already in their second year, have completed the training or are in their second year, and we have 20 who are currently in their first year of letters training. The feedback that we get from our teachers around that work is just, it's so positive and has really grown them as leaders and also growing our readers in the district. And I think our data reflects that as well. Keep going, Dr. Bailey? Alright. Okay. Alright, 1.2.7, I'm going to focus on that just a little bit. Many thanks to the board for your support around the resource, the Amplify Desmos Math resource, and also the job-embedded coaching. Without that support and those resources, these initiatives really just don't take off. So thank you so much for your support with this work. Just explaining a little bit, this summer, we had a few opportunities for teachers to come in and gain comfort and confidence with the resource and training, which was great work. So all of our teachers, prior to starting this school year, have been trained in the resource and also have resources available if they have any questions around the resource as well. This fall, we are going to engage in professional learning on the PD days. The mornings will be dedicated again to understanding the resource and for teachers to ask questions. Training will be provided. And then in the afternoon, probably the most important piece, there will be time for teachers to collaborate with their grade-level teams, really talk about what's working, and focus on kind of next steps as well. So that will be for both professional development days for the fall. And then in the spring, we have Amplify Desmos Math coming in to work with our teachers in every single building. Every building will receive five job-embedded days of coaching, where they will work with our teachers in the classroom on things like differentiation, concept development, unit planning, lesson planning, open question forum, supporting multilingual learners, family engagement, and also on assessment. So a lot of great work to support our teachers around the math instruction. We also, and I should have brought this up earlier, in our PLC process and also MTSS, we use this acronym and it's called RICE. And what it stands for is Relationships, Instruction, Curriculum, and Environment. And this is the order that we really look at things when we're reviewing our data, right? Are the relationships there? Do students feel a sense of belonging? Do they see themselves in the curriculum? The relationship and belonging piece. Then we look at the instruction. And I bring that up because with the math resource, we are asking our teachers to look at their instruction in a different way. I'm sure that many of you, probably just like me, when we were in school and we had a math lesson, you probably had the "I do," which is the teacher explaining what you need to do, then the "we do," let's all give it a try, and then the "you do," right? So like this gradual release model. The resource that we're using uses this launch-monitor-connect process. And if you can recall that ruler example that I gave you last year, we really give students the opportunity to go out and explore on their own, examine their own thinking, collaborate with other students in the classroom about their learning, and then we bring them back for kind of that direct instruction piece. So we are asking for different instruction here, and there's a lot of research around that really structured, problem-based instruction. So we're excited about that. And again, one more time, thank you for the support in that area.
Alright. I get to talk about the 1.3 area, which mostly focuses on post-secondary opportunities and ways that we can prepare our students for a variety of career pathways. And so I want to highlight a couple of areas. One, the board has been made aware of our interest in our work in increasing market value asset opportunities for our students. This is a way for students to learn valuable skills and valuable opportunities through mentorships or apprenticeships to develop the post-secondary skills that they can use either at the college level or at a career level. We want to grow this and expand more opportunities. Similar to, you may have seen a couple articles recently, and you may recall when we had Mr. Bunt and Mr. Kirk come back and talk to us about their marketing classes and the experiences they provide with advertising agencies. And a great example of a market value asset opportunity is when they met with the owner of Salt &amp; Smoke and talked about their entry plan into Kirkwood and what that could look like, including participating in the Chili Bowl advertisement. And if you really read the article, you'll see that the owner's like, gosh, I didn't think about some of these things. What a great, fresh way to get ideas from students. And the students had to present genuine marketing plans. So he gave them feedback on the plans they were giving while also taking their ideas as a way to look at his entry into the Kirkwood market and being able to be downtown Kirkwood. So those types of opportunities, our teachers are already starting to work on and take a look at that throughout the summer work. We just keep asking teachers, are there ways you can embed some real-world learning into what you're doing? Real-world learning also doesn't have to just be something that's connected to career technical education. It could be the essay topic that you're using in an English class. It could be ways that you're examining challenges through the American government class, whatever that might be, expanding some of those market value asset opportunities for our students. Another area that's up here is 1.3.2, using IRC. So an IRC is an industry-recognized credential. That is not just a high school credential, but an opportunity for a student to take a credential and carry that on beyond the high school realm. DESI offers about 40 pages worth of industry-recognized credentials, and some of those could be Adobe Certified Professional, food service and culinary skills, the beginning assessments for careers such as dental assistant or dental hygienist. Those types of assessments can be given to start the students off down a pathway along those career areas. We're going to take a look at ways we can increase that usage at our high school level and increase opportunities for students to take those. Those are just ways to build out their resumes, ways to build out not just college applications, but job applications, and ways to help them stand out when it comes to comparing them to other students for either jobs or college entrance or other mentorship or internship opportunities. So really focusing a lot on those post-secondary plans for our students and post-secondary opportunities. And then we're continuing to look at ways we're expanding our virtual options. We've added a few new vendors this year. For example, we have two students that are taking online American Sign Language as a way to increase exposure to a foreign language. We have a few other students that are taking advanced level of Chinese, and we actually have a few students that are taking Calculus III at Washington University through a partnership with them because it's not offered with us. I know I'm shaking my head too, I wouldn't take it. But taking Calculus III through some of those partnerships. So again, really looking at, there's a traditional path through high school where every class is taken at the high school, and then there are other ways that we can focus on student need and student growth and student opportunity. One's not better than the other, but they really should be tailored to those individual student needs so that we can increase our opportunities. And then just tagging on to even expanding some of those as well. We have some students who are English language learners, and we're looking at putting together, we actually have for a couple of them, something called an IAP, Individual Academic Plan, which focuses more on their individual needs and growth as a pathway to graduation as opposed to 24 required credits that they may need in various areas. So continuing to look at flexible options for our students, and those are some new things we'll be focusing on this school year. The board and the community have already seen these. These are, again, just summaries of what we'll be focusing on throughout, so we won't spend too much time on these areas. This is exactly what we had presented in the work session previously. But these academic areas do focus on reading math, graduation rate, ACT, we talked about. And, as always, we'll pause at the end of the red section for any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Nieman?
Yeah, thanks so much for sharing this additional information. I'm not sure if we're going to be going over the specific goals that are laid out for 2026. I know we had other materials, and I don't see it in the shared material. But I do think it's important to call out the specific goals for 2026. I know, Dr. Bailey, when you first kind of opened up the presentation, you shared that we're looking at cohorts, not just kind of year-to-year, but instead kind of carrying the students through as they progress through school. So personally, I had a little bit of challenge trying to track, kind of at a row level, how we set the goals relative to what we accomplished in spring 2025. So just want to make sure, can you explain a little bit how to read that effectively so that our community members can see how those goals are continuing to increase year over year?
I can try my best.
I don't know that we have that, that's a challenge. I don't know that we have something to share.
Yeah, it's not a visual that we'll be able to present, so I'll try to describe it as best I can. as best I can. The way that we've set a reading goal or a math goal, for example, for a broad group of students is we've looked at what that spring benchmark percentage of students who are at or above benchmark. And for most of our grade levels, that's in that seventy-ish to eighty-ish range, so I'm just going to pick, I'm looking at one, pick second grade, for example. So for second grade, we looked at, in the spring, as first graders, they had seventy-eight point six percent of their students were proficient or advanced in the reading assessment that was provided. Then because we were focused on growth and looking at ways to get to this eighty percent sort of threshold, that's kind of a baseline threshold for a lot of our MTSS processes. So there's going to be a lot of percentages. I know it's going to be a lot of confusion with everything, but if we zero back and just say, we want to look at the amount of growth that we can see from a group of students one year to the next. And if that percentage was below seventy percent, we wanted to see a five percent overall increase. If that percentage was between seventy and eighty percent, we wanted to see a three percent overall increase. And if that percentage was greater than eighty percent, because we're still focused on growth, we wanted to see a one percent increase. So for that second grade group, we had seventy-eight point six percent of our students while they were in first grade that met the proficient or, sorry, were at or above benchmark. So because that's between seventy and eighty, we add three percent to that, and I'm looking and seeing that there's an error that I'm seeing right now. And so that three percent, that seventy-eight point six is not lining up correctly. That should be to eighty-one roughly. So I'll redo a couple of these because the math is, we bumped it down a line, and I'm seeing where it did not line up correctly. And so that could be an area for confusion.
Thank you, and I appreciate you kind of taking a look back at that because I do think it's important for us to continue to challenge ourselves as you've called out, that we need to keep holding ourselves accountable for continuing to increase the bar and help guide our students in that direction. So thank you for kind of relooking back at that to make sure that we're aligned on what those goals are.
And I actually just figured out what I was doing when I typed that up, actually. So if you're looking at that chart, sorry, we've had a lot of numbers go through our reason. If you're looking at that chart, in spring of 2025, for the first grade group, they were at seventy-two point nine percent. That is then used to set the second grade spring goal of seventy-five point one percent, if that makes sense, so.
So you kind of diagonal to the right down?
Yes, I clearly am not ready for Calc three, like we said for those kids. But everything goes to the right, and so that's why that can be slightly confusing is because it looks like it's a cohort group straight across when in fact it's a bit of a diagonal there. So if you start on the left, that is the spring when they were in that grade level, and then it moves to the right for the current grade level.
Thank you. Appreciate you clarifying that.
Thank you for asking. Clearly, we had to rethink about it.
And I just want to make sure that our community members, again, are able to look at a chart and be able to track so that we can see how we're continuing to progress and challenge ourselves for the goals and not, if you look at it, if you look at it as it would, you'd normally read it, it looks like in some places we're reducing the goal that we exceeded the previous year, and in fact, we're not doing that, we're continuing to push.
Probably should have color-coded it so that it's easy to follow.
Yeah. Great. So, Dr. Gran, I really appreciate the additional insight that you provided on the PLC expectations and really direction that you're giving to those teachers and staff to make sure that we're maximizing use of that time and really identify how teachers can best support their students in their growth. Can you share a little bit more about, and I believe we talked about this during the work session, but the goals or how the PLCs are being viewed, not just at kind of a horizontal, from a horizontal lens of the other team teachers in the same grade or teachers that are teaching the same subject in the same grade, but also how we're looking vertically through, so when a student is progressing through their education, we're seeing how the, say, ELA teachers are continuing to move the students grade to grade?
Yeah, so that vertical alignment piece from grade to grade, specifically so important at every grade level, but specifically when students change buildings, right, from middle school to high school as well. So the curriculum writing process really supports what that looks like to ensure that all teachers have clarity and understanding around that. And I would say that our ultimate goal, and Ms. Locke and I were talking about this today, is to make sure that in the PLC process, our teachers have that first question answered with absolute clarity. What do we want students to know and be able to do in second grade? And the next step to that would be maybe understanding what they are expected to know and do in first and also in third to help the continuity and ensure there are not gaps. So that would be a really positive traditional pathway. Now, students who have potential gaps in their learning, it's also positive for that vertical alignment because we are, again, very clear when a student moves to third grade about what they should know and be able to do as well and to really address those gaps pretty quickly. So the curriculum writing process, those PLC conversations and data, and then also that clear understanding around standards really helps that vertical alignment piece.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. And I heard Ms. Locke, you earlier mentioned some of the measurement tools that are being used to track what that progress looks like. Just curious what some of those measurement tools are and if you have the kind of resources that you need to be able to measure appropriately.
Yes, of course. Fastbridge, I'll just start with that one because that's one we're most familiar with, is used, again, at the time of year when we're collecting the data, when it's most appropriate in those meetings. But another tool that we have recently been working with teachers to learn more about is a tool that we call DNA illuminate. And it is a standards-based assessment tool. So PLCs, if they're working on a certain standard and they want to do like a pre-test, check-in during the middle of the unit, and then a post-test, they could use that tool to ensure that the questions are aligned to standards and then be able to see how are students growing over the course of that unit. And again, at those halftime checks, if they're not seeing that kids are learning what we expected them to learn, then we can quickly reevaluate, think about reteaching, think about what's next, so we don't get to that end-of-unit assessment and say, oh, shoot, that didn't work out the way we wanted it to. I think sometimes student work is also a very valuable tool, especially in writing, when they can, or math, when they can pull together a common assignment and look for patterns and trends, common errors, common misunderstandings, and then really use that to build upon for student learning.
Wonderful. I'm glad, really glad to hear of that more real-time assessment. I know in the past it has been challenging for teachers to have to have that lag time, so really glad to hear we have more real-time assessments. Thank you.
Ms. Hepburn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how much I love hearing about the PLCs. I wanted to just comment that this past year, when Ms. Motica and I were touring the schools, one of my favorite things was getting to see where the teachers do the PLCs in the different buildings, because sometimes we got to see them in action, like actually taking place. Other times, there would just still be notes on the board. So it was just really great to see that that time was really being used and seeing how the energy from the teachers and that they were really working together and supporting each other. So I just really, it was great having that firsthand experience with the PLCs. I also, Ms. Locke, really liked hearing more information on the student assessment piece. And as you were just saying, the student assignments thing, I think, was really interesting. So I think shedding that light on it for the community and for parents was really great. I just wanted to say, I vividly remember the ruler example that you mentioned with the Desmos. I loved it. It made a big impression on me, and I think that's the kind of experiential learning that these kids, I think, really benefit from, and I'm very passionate about. So thank you for bringing it up again because I hadn't thought about it in a while. And then, Dr. Bailey, I want to continue to support the work that we do on the market value assets, career readiness, all those different things. I think, you know, in the future, whatever happens with various strategic plans and things like that, I think having some emphasis on that really helps make sure that we're setting all students up for success. And so I just think that it's really great work. So thank you.
Mr. Caffey? Ms. Jordan?
Probably going to ditto what everybody said about the PLCs. I think that's a game changer, and we'll continue to see more growth academically for our students. And just shouting out, like, you're making the letters training a non-negotiable for all students, all teachers, and so that's how we're going to see that growth. So just thank you to everybody. And I'm looking forward to, like Hepburn said, getting the student success, like rolling that out completely. So thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Ms. Bangborn? I really appreciate looking at the cohort data where possible because I feel that we are acknowledging students' growth year-to-year versus just putting a blanket, you know, approval or percentage there. So I really appreciate that. I think that will help us really dive deeper in, you know, as we go through the year. I did, something kind of hit me as you were talking, and I feel really loud, so sorry. Is there a way to get a list of all of the IRC exams that we are offering our students? And I ask that because I feel I've gotten multiple different questions over the years and specifically in recent past, like, what are we doing for students that are trying to prepare for something maybe beyond college? Or what are some of those other opportunities? And I don't know if I've seen it all in one place, and I just feel like we do a lot, and we should celebrate that. So that was my question.
We do, and I can give you a short answer in that the number of actual IRC exams that we give is not very large, just because we've had such a heavy emphasis on some of the college career preparation and haven't taken a real deep dive into that. That's one reason why it's going to be a focus area for us this school year because it's a separate exam that students would take. For example, in a previous high school, we did the Microsoft Certification Office, and that was a four-day exam that we had to give because you had to be certified in Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Access of all things. And so it's an area that I think we can grow in for sure. We do have students that take it at South County Tech, depending on the area of focus that they have for cosmetology or automotive or things like that. And I think we've done a couple at the high school in our CTE courses, but it's certainly one that can expand for us. And I think that, talking to our counselors, you'll see a little bit later when we're talking a little bit about offering additional advanced planning opportunities. It's an area that our counselors are focused on as well as looking at what are those different ways we can guide parents and students to have a little bit more knowledge about post-secondary pathways they can take. And I'll use the example of Honeywell. Honeywell's a big corporation that's based out of Kansas City, and when some of us went to Kansas City to learn more about market value assets, they had taken a deep dive into a lot of their jobs and realized that they may be asking for things that aren't necessarily necessary for their specific careers. They developed some independent in-house type IRC exams that they can give to those high school students in those areas to make a direct pathway into Honeywell and different divisions. So in working with some businesses, those opportunities may arise as well. But it's certainly something that we can get with the high school just to see what ones we currently have, but it's definitely an area that we can grow in.
Yeah, and Dr. Rumpus, my thought was, and again, was what a great thing to celebrate, right? It just seems like a really positive impact that we're making with all these opportunities and to be able to see it in one place for, not just as like a parent of somebody at the high school, but for our community. So anyways, just a thought, really exciting. Thank you.
And we will actually, as we start to roll out our data dashboard as part of our SRSN, you'll see some of those indicators on that specific dashboard that'll be public as well.
This is all great, and I just want to echo, thank you for the cohort data that I think is a game changer for how we look at things. And thank you, Dr. Gran, for explaining so clearly PLCs. We hear it all the time, and I thought I knew what all was involved, but it's really great to get the detail that you gave us. So thank you.
She explained that much better than I explained the go to the right on the angle thing, so.
Yes, Mr. Caffey.
On the cohort piece, which is great, I know a year ago, you started providing the longitudinal slides, which is like one of my favorite slides. That was cohort.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Yes. And actually, we were looking at that today in terms of celebrations when we start looking at some of the students where they, some student groups have made ten, fifteen percent growth since kindergarten, first grade, and then even looking at kindergarten data, like our kindergartners in general have just made leaps and bounds. And so we're very, very proud and very excited, and our teachers do such an amazing job, and they have worked their backsides off in getting these scores and getting these improvements. But our kindergarten data, I don't think it's anything short to say it's the best that we've ever had in all our time tracking it. So we're very excited about what that's going to look like rolling up. There are lots of pieces that roll into that, but yes, that cohort data, you can look straight line, I know on that one for sure. So Dr. Map and I will be tag-teaming parts of this, and we'll have others that jump in. As much as we have celebrations for our red area, heavy academics, we do have some celebrations in these, but we know that there's a lot of opportunity for us specifically around closing achievement gap, closing disproportionality gaps for our Black students and our students with IEPs. So here's some specific focus around those areas. I want to highlight, this particular slide is probably one that has a ton of stuff that we have going on this year. I'm going to specifically talk about two areas around student discipline, and we'll talk about first, our students with IEPs. While we saw a slight increase, well, not a slight, but we saw an increase in the number of referrals, we did see a decrease in our overall suspension data. Dr. Davis, who's behind me for our Director of Special Education, and I actually got a chance to take a look at the data. And in some ways, there's a celebration in that when you do an average, a weighted average across all of St. Louis County, so they control for the big districts and the small districts by looking at it as number of suspensions for students with IEPs over one hundred students, Kirkwood actually has the best rate in all of St. Louis County. And so for students with IEPs, we're in a very good spot compared to all of the other school districts in St. Louis County. Doesn't mean we can't make improvement. And we know that we can make improvement, and we know that we can keep growing, but when we look at that disproportionality data, one of the challenges is that there's, we've made such great improvements on suspension for students without IEPs that there's still a slight disproportionality in that, in there. But in terms of our students with IEPs, we've made some really good strides. However, in thinking specific changes and things that we'll be updating for this school year, that data report was something that has been delayed a little bit from SSD, so Dr. Davis and I were glad we could pull that out. But the heavy focus for our IEP teams will really be looking at reviewing that data and meeting about individual students. So when we pull our edutclamber data, we can see how many students have, you know, multiple offenses, what those offenses are for, where is that located at, what is the function of that behavior? And those IEP teams can meet and develop those individualized supports. So if you hear a phrase called BIP, that's a Behavior Intervention Plan, that's something that's very specific to a student. It looks at what led to the behavior, what was rewarding the behavior or continuing it, and what are ways we can extinguish or try to eliminate that behavior. We've also been able to work with a group called CBIT through Special School District, that's Countywide Behavioral Intervention Team. Think of that as like a SWAT team for student behavior that comes in and does a ton of data and ton of data collection and then directly coaches the team members around specific students and around specific needs and in developing individualized behavior support plans. The special ed team was one of the first in St. Louis County to implement Charting the Life Course with the IEPs. And Charting the Life Course is a collaborative approach that helps students make choices and plan for the future they want while engaging the supportive families and educators to create IEP goals that develop on strengths and skill building. Why that has an impact on those behavior pieces is part of what they talk about during that is what might be factors that inhibit your ability to achieve the goals that you have. And if we're looking at specific behaviors for students, a level of independence and a level of prompting that they may need around those behaviors is a part of those discussions. And so that individual focus and that individualized support for those students, along with a few new folks that we are partnering with when it comes to our autism effective practice specialists, our social-emotional effective practice specialists, and our kind of academic coach that we have through Special School District, will be helping us in providing that support for our IEP teams. The special ed team will actually be at the office tomorrow, and we're going to take a look at some of that data as well with them. In addition, you'll hear me talk about this for our students of color as well, that we have access to disproportionality funding. So one, and maybe the only good thing about having disproportionate number for discipline is that we do get access to a decent amount of funding through Special School District that we're required to spend on activities that have an evidence-based approach to reducing the disproportionality for students with IEPs and for students of color when it comes to discipline situations. So a lot of that funding this year is going towards new learning for our school psychologists and having them take a deeper dive in participating in our behavior support teams at our schools, continued restorative practice training. And then something that we're going to focus a lot on and try to build out and develop is a community mentor program, similar to a Big Brother, Big Sister program, and looking at having somebody be a spearhead for that through the Kirkwood team. And so potentially working on developing a role or position to be able to do that. Thinking about highly successful or just successful, or whatever you want to measure, Kirkwood graduates that can come back and connect with students directly about future plans and opportunities and really talk to them about, you know, I've been through Kirkwood, I've lived this life, I am, you know, can give you lots of advice and provide that sort of learning for the students and make those direct connections to the folks. And we've got several people that have already expressed an interest in doing something like this. And we've got several people that have already expressed an interest in doing something like this, and so we're excited to take a deeper dive on that as well. And in some cases, we also have to admit that they're still learning for us and learning for our leaders and learning for our teachers to do. And so we'll go to a national conference that's around innovative schools that has five different conferences all kind of rolled into one for alternative programming, student discipline, special education support. We'll take a team of teachers and team of administrators there. We're also taking part in an SEL Fellows Program through CASL, which is the kind of standard bearer for social emotional learning and what that district leadership around SEL support looks like. And then our SEL coaches will be doing walkthroughs with our administrators around a Universal's checklist. So last time I mentioned it, but the Universals are really just those standard behaviors and standard routines, rules, procedures that we want to see in every classroom. So if you guys walk in any teacher's classroom, you're probably going to see things like the rules posted, the routines that they have for turning in papers or getting their Chrome, or sorry, getting their iPads or getting supplies or the way that they line up, or just all those routines that they have in place. Those are ways that we help support students, provide predictability for behaviors, and provide ways that they can return to a regulated state. For our students of color, we're continuing the restorative practice training. I think we counted 180, I know you'll touch on this too, Dr. Map, 180 staff members that we've already provided training to in the past year and a half. And that is not including the introduction that we've done for all the new teachers that we do, and Dr. Map will touch on this here in a moment as well. And then continuing with that disproportionality funding, we'll extend our work with Dr. Cox around trauma-informed approaches and trauma support for our staff, and then deepening that with some of that disproportionality funding. And then, like I mentioned, the mentor program, really looking at ways we can build that out and hopefully recruiting a few of you to be a part of that as well. So, Dr. Map?
Yeah, speaking to, and I think kind of piggybacking off of Dr. Granov in terms of really explaining restorative practices, really want to make sure that there's a good understanding of what that really means and how that really plays out in our organization. And that is that when I really think about restorative practices, I really think about two things, and that is focusing on relationships and focusing on trust. And those two things are things that come about through the work of restorative practices and building and creating relationships, number one, and thinking about how we proactively and intentionally do that work. 80% of what restorative practice is, is proactive, and only 20% of it is reactive. And so trying to make sure that we are creating opportunities for that to happen proactively and creating that sense of, sense of, and sense of trust. We really, I think that one of the things that we kind of almost take for granted is that trust is a given, and it's not. Unfortunately, when we think about our Black community, particularly here in Kirkwood, you have 80-plus years of very bad relationships in terms of trust that can't be rectified overnight. And that is something that we are working to do through the idea of restorative practices, through that idea of making sure that we can create opportunities for having something to restore back to. And so that, that's a complicated process. It takes time. But it is something that we are committed to in doing the work that we do with restorative practices. Like Dr. Bailey said, 180 have been trained since we started this work. And then throughout the opportunities we have this year, there's opportunities for at least 120 staff members to sign up if they chose to. And so this is something that we do believe is something that is set up to create opportunities for staff to grow professionally and improve in the culture and climate in which we have in our schools. Those opportunities are varied, so some full day, some two-half-day mornings. And so really trying to meet the needs and making sure that staff can sign up for those as we would have planned. A couple of the other things I would think about, you know, we really talk about, and I talked about this with our, one of our teams this week, was the idea of, you know, communication is so huge, and so again, going back to that trust piece. When you think about communication, one of the slides and the information that we use with our SEL coaches and the training that we do is understanding how much of communication is really three different things, and that is words, the things that we're saying, the tone of voice in which we're saying it, and then our body language. And the most impactful of those is actually our body language. 55% of the communication is based on how we, our body language is. 38% is the tone of voice in which we're actually communicating with people. And then finally, only 7% of what we communicate is actually the words that we say. And so really being mindful of that and thinking about how our culture is truly set focused on supporting staff to be able to communicate effectively and efficiently with students, with families, with community, is a big part of what we really talk about when we talk about what restorative practice is about. A couple of the other things that I would want to touch on is just the focus on trust. Again, that idea that trust is something that we have to be able to have something to restore to, and so creating the opportunity for that relationship upfront. But then also, one of my other favorite quotes is that change happens at the speed of trust. And so again, if we are meant to be able to change something, it's going to take building relationships to create that trust in the first place. And so that's where our work lies, and the work that we do with restorative practices. It is something that will take time, but we believe that the things that we're doing now are the right things to keep us moving forward in the right direction. All of our staff, all teachers and staff, have, had opportunities to be a part of restorative practices. This is something that started since I came back in the district in 2022. And in 2324, all of the SEL coaches and myself went around to all the staffs across the district, and we had a conversation with, about restorative practices. So again, this is something that has been throughout our organization, and we plan to continue to have at least, when I talked about it last year and we started working forward, I had said at least twice a semester, we would offer an opportunity for restorative practices. As it's set right now, we have at least three opportunities within the next two school years, and there's no plan to change that moving forward. We will continue to have opportunities for people to sign up for those opportunities. And then new, new teachers are having that at new teacher orientation as well, having an opportunity with SEL coaches and myself to have restorative as part of that work. Another thing that I would highlight is just that our principals are working with our SEL coaches, and they have restorative piece that they do as well, an assessment of looking at where is their building in terms of restorative? And then what are our next steps for them? What are their goals to continue to move that, that work forward? And so that's something that our SEL coaches and our principals are working on within their daily work, and then setting goals each year in terms of that as well. And then finally, the one, last thing I would, I would highlight that I think is, is hard to see because it's hard to measure, is the work that I get to do in my role to support conversations around restorative across our district. I have supported a number of, I would say at least 20-plus staff members through different conflicts, different issues throughout this last school year. Sometimes at the direction of our Human Resources Office, sometimes at the ask of a building principal. That's what my role is to be able to go in and do in our buildings. And so really from that restorative approach, when I, when I go in, I really have four things that I talk about, and that is to understand, to number one, honor dignity, to address problems, not people, to make sure that we're able to understand our intent and our impact. And then finally, to make sure that we are able to, I'm blanking on the last one. I should have wrote those down. I didn't write those down. So intent and impact, address problems, not people, honor dignity. And finally, to, it is not coming to me. It will come to me, and I will, I'll write it down. I'll bring it back when I come back at 2.3, so give me a second, and I'll bring back, bring that back. But really focusing with our staff on understanding what happened, who it impacted, and then how we make it right. Those are the three questions that we really focus on when we have conflict, when we have issues within our organization. And that's work that, again, I get to do from my seat, is supporting our staff through those things so that we can have relationships that we can restore back to and truly continue building that trust within our organization. So those are just a few things that I would want to highlight in terms of restorative, and that'd be 2.1, 2.3, all throughout, things that you'll see throughout the rest of the presentation as well.
I'm going to speak to 2.16, the PLC process, but specifically that last portion of that sentence with an emphasis on learning growth for Black students in closing gender gaps and performance in the areas of math and science. So we are using the Amplify Desmos Math Resource to really create that universal experience and equitable access for all students. We have also, speaking about robotics, we continue to expand that program for our fourth through 12th graders. And just something that's excited, exciting, I know I shared it last time, but the World Robotics Competition is actually here in St. Louis this year, and trying to get our students there is something they are very excited about and have already shared with teachers and with me. Also Idea Lab, it's really about expanding those real-world opportunities. I shared a little bit about the Erosion Project at West Chester and what that looks like moving forward as well. We also talked about measuring impact, and I think we were all a little disappointed to see the data from that Panorama survey. So we, we kind of went back to the drawing board and tried to figure out some ways to capture data in a, in a better way. We are going to give pre and post-assessments when students are actually in Idea Lab, the very first day and then the very last day of Idea Lab. Our K-1, 2 assessments or surveys will look a little different. They have a sad face to a smiley face. And then our third grade to fifth grade will be a little bit more detailed. But we're hoping that even just the window of time will capture the actual Idea Lab data that we're trying to gather as well. Something we also figured out as we were working through curriculum and talking to teachers is that teachers may not be making the explicit connection that Idea Lab is science or that my unit on Playground Cool Down or Bugs and Blooms is science, and you are a scientist when you are doing this work. So we have partnered with our teachers, and they have agreed, yes, we will be more explicit with that. I don't know if it's, you know, the direct correlation to help with that data, we hope, but really talking about and using the word "science" when we're in our units of study as well. Looking at that gender gap piece, we're going to continue to use the PLC process and encourage our teachers to really look at that gender disparity and gap within math and science. And then our middle school and high school curriculum writing, we're in development right now, again, expanding those real-world opportunities. I used the earthquake in Russia last time, but there is now Hurricane Erin to use this time, right? There are so many real-world opportunities that are happening every day for our students to learn from as well. And then also making sure it has that tight alignment to the next-generation science standards, which Missouri has adopted, and we have as well moving forward. So we're excited about that work and to continue supporting this initiative.
All right, moving on to 2.2. This is expanding and ensuring and expanding educational programs and access. As we shared previously, the ACT test has changed its format, and they have made the science portion of that optional, and they have actually decreased the number of questions throughout there without necessarily adjusting the time. So our students actually have a little bit more time for some of the ACT testing piece. Some of our students have already started to take that in the July version. That'll be slowly transitioning over. As a part of that, we're offering additional preparation test options and practice test options, even starting in the freshman year, to really help us with that course selection and course guidance throughout. Our curriculum team is constantly looking at that ACT preparation as ways to look at our curriculum at the high school, but also down to the middle school and elementary level. One exciting thing, and it may take a long time for us to see, but exciting thing about seeing those super-high scores for reading and math in our kindergarten levels that eventually that will trickle its way up and support students even taking the ACT. Sometimes people forget that the ACT is a timed test. You had originally 60 minutes to answer 60 questions in the reading section, and that's including all the passages and reading pieces. So if your pace of reading doesn't improve or get better, the fluency level of your being able to read, you might run out of time in taking that test. So in seeing our students get those reading scores, that will have a long-term impact and benefit on us. We'd also like to highlight, and as Ms. Pangboard said, I get excited about the different pathway pieces too. That was the old high school principal in me, and so. But just looking at the different pathways and to continue to expand options for our students, we've had success increasing the number of traditionally underrepresented student groups in advanced courses. We had a 17% increase from the year-to-year last year. That includes dual credit, AP, honors, early college, South County Tech, STL Caps. I could give you lots and lots of acronyms, but essentially, these are courses that provide students with a non-traditional or an advanced opportunity to be able to express their knowledge. STL Caps, if you don't know, is our St. Louis Center for Advanced Professional Studies, and students can do engineering, business management, entrepreneurship, even some medical exploration during that. And our Kirkwood students, I think we've mentioned this before, were the winners on a project in developing a sort of bridge between the Eads Bridge and the new Arch Grounds, the design project. I think you might have seen some of those. They're pretty cool designs, and looking at ways for that. So again, market value asset, real-world opportunity, and a way for students to shine in what they're doing. And as I mentioned before, we've also increased the number of vendors that we're connecting with for the online course option, again, giving kids flexible opportunities to explore passion areas. I'd already mentioned the American Sign Language as just another way. That technically is a foreign language that students can learn, and doing that on the online version, we'll see how well it goes. And if it goes really well, that's a hot topic that a lot of students have been interested in. We have also used at the high school, and this was put into place, Dr. Harrell and Dr. Habner before that, a stop day. And the stop day essentially is we're stopping instruction for that day, and every teacher becomes advertiser for their courses and for the course pathways. And we spend a lot of time talking to students about which courses would lead to the future options that they have and sort of backwards planning with some of them if they want to land in certain spots for everything that they're doing. We're also starting to work with a few organizations to develop a mentorship and apprenticeship database that's available for employers to put opportunities in and for students to then look up and access and try to take advantage of those opportunities that are out there. We've got two or three things in the works with that, but there is, it's kind of a community job board essentially. That's a digital version of that, and students can match their interests and needs with community area businesses, and those businesses then can bring students in and provide them some opportunities to learn and grow. And it helps create a nice ecosystem of work that's available for students after high school. We've also done a, worked with our counselors, looking to add a new online program at the high school. We're going to pilot that this year. It's a new program that allows students to complete some career and post-secondary lessons, explore college and career options, and do a lot of interest inventory and personality inventories. I will tell you, our counselors took a dry run at that as students through the student lens, and at least half of them landed on a career of counselors, so it did work out for them. I randomly clicked things, and it said I should be an astronaut, which will not go well with motion sickness, and so. But it was definitely very interesting to see that based on answers to questions, this was a career area that popped up. I could explore the career pathways and the career clusters, but then it said, now take a personality test, and does that actually fit with those two different areas and ways we can explore that? So we're excited about that. It also has college exploration tools that will give people the real cost, estimated cost, and directly link them to the college website about doing their financial calculator. I learned that St. Louis U is out of my price range at the moment. And so just looking at those opportunities to expand knowledge for our students. And then if that goes well pilot year, then in the future years, we actually, that gets opened up for parent access as well so they can explore those things with students additionally. And then finally, I do love to highlight, even though we're talking about post-secondary, in some of these, I do love to highlight our parents as teachers with 2.2.8. Penny Chastain has worked very, very hard to grow that program, and we have reduced our waitlist to basically not happening, like there is no waitlist. We increased the number of visits that we were able to provide, increased the number of events that we were able to provide. And that is really our first opportunity for, for a lot of families to get connected to the Kirkwood School District. You can access parent as teachers and access our parent educators while you're still pregnant, and they can work with you all the way up until you enter kindergarten. For a lot of our families, that's that first interaction with Kirkwood School District. And we have amazing parent educators that do such tremendous work, and they have funky hours. So sometimes they may be meeting with a family at 7:00 PM, and other times they may be 7:00 AM. And so it depends on when that family needs arise. This is also, in some instances, a pathway for us to see some developmental screenings and some other screening tests that they can be provided as maybe there's a need for additional intervention or additional support such as early childhood special ed. So that has increased that as well. But just providing those additional opportunities for our students to be able to access these pretty, pretty cool programs.
So finally, looking at our intentional work around retention and recruitment of staff of color. That specifically definitely falls within the work that we continue to do. Thank you to the board and the approval of our building liaisons. I think that that is one of the biggest roles that we have in order to create that beyond just certified staff. It is our opportunity to be able to have staff within our buildings who get to focus on the relationships and how to, how they create belonging within our buildings for staff of color. And so that intentionality around that is a huge piece of our retention work. One of the things that we were able to start last, a couple weeks, or last week, I guess, at our opening lunch for staff of color, we really focused in on stories, the stories of our staff of color so far throughout our organization, and then helping that to frame how we move forward. And so it was a really good opportunity for us to really frame out and our lead mentor for teachers of color, myself, and our work with leading staff of color and teachers of color throughout this year, really focusing on that story aspect and continuing to let that stories of our staff be what guides people and what helps us be able to know where we have work to improve and know where we are doing well within our organization. And so that's a big piece of the work that we have. And so, that's a big piece of the work that we have in that area. As we talked about before, Anew would be adding in community opportunities for racial allyship meetings, continuing our staff ones as we have already had throughout the last year, but adding in the aspect of our community being able to weigh in and have the same work towards that. Really, when we talk about the work of racial allyship, it is a multi-step process. We hopefully, we can start with being allies. We've moved towards being accomplices and eventually worked towards being co-conspirators. And so, how do we work towards all of those aspects and how do we help people on their journey? No matter where they are in the work, to be able to continue to be the people who work to create opportunity without reliance on race, but truly equitable opportunity for all. And then, again, with the SEL Leadership Institute, and it was on one of those sites before, but really truly being intentional around that work and continuing to have our administrators be able to have that as a piece of their work and then reflecting on that and thinking about how do they bring that back to the buildings and to the district and focusing on retention and looking at how they let the stories of our staff speak to what they do differently and the work to support their staff of color and to work to improve the conditions for those staff of color. And all that, again, going back to and working on that idea of trust. We have at least three buildings that will be working with our organization to really work with the understanding of trust, using the thin book of trust as part of that work and really improving the culture through improving trust, through improving relationships and trust. We believe that that will be working towards continuing to improve recruitment and retention for our staff of color throughout the organization. So, with that, excuse me, we are through Section 2. Again, these are things that you have seen before and all the things that we just talked through and we allow you all opportunity for questions.
Ms. Pangborn.
Okay. Thank you for all that. I absolutely love how much we've grown to really create and expand our opportunities for our students. From when I started on the board to now, it is just like we are, you know, light years ahead. It's really exciting, so congratulations on all that work. I did have one quick question. For restorative practices, are we requiring all of our staff to go through that or it's optional?
So, we have opportunities for all staff to go through that, yes. And so, we as a district will continue to establish what that looks like, but the opportunity is absolutely there for all staff to go through it, yes. And again, different aspects. Again, we had opportunity where staff had training a couple of years ago and then we continue to have the opportunity throughout the years moving forward. In addition to new teachers, all of them are part of that as well in their new teacher orientation.
Thank you.
Ms. Andrews.
I will just say, if we don't have expectations for our staff, then for, with regards to restorative practices, how can we have the expectation that that be what they use? And so, I would just, again, encourage you to, if this is something that's important to us, if it's something that we believe in, then you make it an expectation. And I get that you can't make people, but what you can do is have the expectation that this is what our students will receive.
Ms. Sharn.
So, yeah, just to, I guess, so I'm struggling with the discipline data goal. We've talked about this. I personally struggle for measuring the right thing based on what I heard a month ago. I just, I'm really struggling to connect the dots. I also, so what I'm hearing is the restorative practice component is a big part of our effort to influence the numbers of students with discipline referrals, IEP and African-American, but it's optional? Is that correct? Restorative practice training is optional?
Dr. Map, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is previously, all teachers had some level of training through either district-wide work or at staff development trainings at the building level. It was more of the introductory piece of it to understand what the components are, what it looks like. Not everyone has been required to go through the multi-day full training. So, all new teachers are now getting that training. All administrators are getting it with an expectation that they're utilizing it in the building, modeling it among the adults and their interactions with students to see it. And so, it's just requiring everyone to go through the multi-day training is what hasn't happened at this point in time. But I understand the concern or the request that that would happen for all teachers.
Okay. Well, I mean, you can speak.
No, she's saying last me, I think at the work session, you said it wasn't required by everyone.
The full two-day or full-day training is not required for everyone, partly because even in terms of thinking about staff, that would require us a very different model of supporting the need for covering our buildings if we had all staff do that. And to Dr. Rumpus's point, we do, that's why we do all-staff trainings at staff meetings or different opportunities like that. We do have our SEL coaches, again, do that training with our teaching assistants as part of specifically, how do you de-escalate at recess? You saw that in the plan as well. So, the two, the full-day training or two-half-day training, that is not something that we've specifically said all staff will do, but some training in restorative practices, absolutely something that all of our staff have had and would continue to have moving forward.
I'm just, we can, so where I'm at with this is understanding, so if this is what we're choosing to measure, there have been slides in the presentation comparing kind of the 24, 25 focus to the 25, 26. I'm not understanding what we're going to do different this year. And we've repeatedly lost ground with this goal. So, I don't want to take up a ton of time here. I've expressed my thoughts on this. One, are we measuring the right thing? But if it is, what are we doing different this year? Because my strong concern right now, and I will voice this in speaking to employees within the district, is that this goal specifically is becoming something that people are sensitive to in terms of it potentially influencing their behavior and not wanting data to look bad. And I don't think that's a good place to be. So, I would urge us to reflect on that, but I would like some, just follow-up. It can be, you know, down the line. But what are we going to do different this year if we think we're going to make an impact on this goal? Because this one specifically, and I'll include it in my wrap-up comments, is one that we've established our goal for 2026 at a place of performance where we've already been. And that's just a flaw of the plan in general. So, but what I would like to see is just what are we going to do different this year? So, thank you.
And I just want to say, we've engaged in the same conversations of whether or not that's the right measurement. Because, yes, you know, historically, I've heard that concern from teachers that were encouraged not to or discouraged from writing a referral, which would impact this data. I would also argue that you just pointed out that we haven't necessarily gone in the right direction. So, I don't know that that's the case. I would also say, in this data, we're talking about a K-12 cohort of students. That group of students is different each and every year. And so, while the group of students that just left may have had a higher number of referrals, so the next year, the number drops down because that cohort of students moved on. And is that necessarily related to anything we did? Maybe or maybe not. And so, all of that to reinforce, we've had that discussion of is the number of referrals the right data point moving forward? So, that's something we need to decide.
Ms. Hepburn.
I just wanted to say how excited I was about some of the things, Dr. Bailey, you were discussing around the innovative work that you were telling us about with the IEPs and the teamwork with the SSD and just the mentorship programs and the, how you're exploring, you know, going to conferences and looking at those groups. I just think it's really exciting to hear you come and present on, you know, one of the goals that I'm especially passionate about is, you know, focusing on those students. And I just, it was really cool to hear you come and say, we're going to be innovative with it and we've got funds and we've got ideas and we're going to be looking at that this year. And so, I find that to be really exciting. And then same, kind of in that same vein, Dr. Grana with the IDEA Lab. I know at the work session, this was kind of a little bit of a conversation. So, from what you said, you took all the feedback that we had at that meeting and you put it to use. I mean, everything from how we're evaluating, making sure that it ties back, that the kids know that it's science. I mean, pretty much everything we discussed at that meeting, you kind of came up with a plan to address that. And I think that that was a, just awesome to see something go from talk to action so quickly. And I think that's really exciting because I believe in the IDEA Lab. Again, experiential learning is something that, there's so much data that shows how good it is for kids and so, I'm excited about that. And then, I hate to say it, but I do have a question about restorative practices. So, the training that all the teachers get, the just normal built-in training that you were talking about, that's not the half-day or the full-day, that's baked into every year and all staff get that repeatedly? Like, once they've done it, they don't just never have it again? They redo it consistently, like each year or multiple times a year? So, they're constantly refreshed on the principles?
So, are, we are very fortunate. We have three social-emotional learning coaches that are assigned to each of our buildings and then they all collectively support KECC and the high school. And so, that group really works daily with our teachers, with our principals on restorative practices in their respective buildings that they support. And so, again, we do, yes, we've gone then as a team to present at different buildings throughout the last few years and we will continue to do that moving forward absolutely to make sure that there is an understanding of what restorative practices is. Again, that's limited. It's like a staff meeting, not a full training, but it is an opportunity for us to share what restorative is and how it continues to impact what our district is doing in that area, yes.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, you know, if it goes a couple of years without somebody having, you know, I just feel like the kind of thing where consistency and consistent exposure would probably benefit people because it's not something necessarily that they're applying every day. It's not like learning a math teaching skill or an English teaching skill. So, I don't know if, short of doing the half-day or full-day, if there are some ways to pepper in, you know, specific techniques or specific, you know, example case study, you know, whatever, just with some more consistency. I don't know if that maybe bridges the gap between, you know, one end of the spectrum and the other end of the spectrum, but it was just a thought that I had, so that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, it's a practice. It is a restorative practice. It is something that people are doing every day. It's how, again, it's back to, it's how you talk to people, it's how you treat people. There's a restorative way to do it and there's a non-restorative way to do it. When we talk about the work of restorative practices, one of the pieces is the social discipline window, which talks about, am I doing things to people or for people or not? Or am I doing things with? And so, that's a piece of restorative that is happening every day, all the time. And yeah, you can be doing it restoratively or not. And so, it is something that we're practicing every day and that's why our principals have been trained on it as well, because they are modeling that. They are doing hopefully staff meetings in terms of circles. We start our senior leadership meetings with a circle. Again, all those things are modeled throughout our organization to continue to expect restorative be at the center of what we do.
Ms. Neiman.
I'll try and get quickly off of the restorative practices, but just wanted to see, you included a mention of de-escalation strategies as part of the restorative practices. Is that built into the restorative practices or is that a separate set of strategies that are employed?
It is built into the work of the half-day restorative and then the full-day restorative. There would be a de-escalation pieces with that, absolutely. The de-escalation that's in the plan really speaks specifically to things that our SEL coaches do to support our teaching assistants and particularly in the K-5 area of recess. And so, having opportunities to learn how to properly de-escalate when you have students with a conflict over a ball, when you have students with a conflict over what someone said or what they did, those are opportunities for that restorative work to be happening again and for that training to happen for our teaching assistants and other people who are not classroom teachers. Those are people who get that specific de-escalation work is really to make sure that we can proactively, hopefully, avoid the need for some of the reactive restorative through some of that proactive de-escalation work.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to clarify, because in 2.1.3, it says, "Provide targeted training to restorative practices, management and de-escalation strategy." So, I didn't know if they were separate or one and the same. So, I do think that de-escalation can be really valuable and not having to get to the point where you have a conflict that then has to be, go through a restorative.
And I could add some context to, Ms. Neiman, on that. There is a specific requirement that we have for every building that they have a crisis team in place and that crisis team gets evidence-based training through the Nonviolent Crisis Institute that includes specific de-escalation techniques that they're all taught. And so, there is a requirement in place that each building send us. Usually, it's anywhere from four to eight people that are those that are trained specifically in that, along with all of our special educators have that de-escalation technique training that then the SEL coaches have embedded into the restorative practice pieces. So, that's, there is a separate piece to that, but they're connected in some ways well.
That's helpful, thank you. I was curious also, we have a goal in there to expand the number of Hispanic and Black students in the gifted program. Do we have specific strategies for trying to accomplish that?
It's something that I know that Ms. Locke has worked on with our gifted team. However, there have been some legal challenges, just to be very open and frank about that, that present a bit of a conundrum for us regarding that. And so, we haven't expanded on that specifically because of those, not directly with us legal challenges, but just in the scope of challenges around efforts to do things like that. It hasn't been something we've expanded on, so.
I think it'd be helpful for us to just have that awareness of context so that we're not
Sure.
putting that on ourselves if we aren't able to accomplish that for reasons outside of our control. So, just wanted to, I guess, two quick positive things. Love the idea of getting innovative ideas for supporting behavior by attending those conferences and staying on top of new practices that are evolving, so that's awesome. And then also really excited to hear the call-out for the parents as teachers and making sure that we really have that chance to get in early with the students and set them on the right path for success from a very early age. So, congratulations on getting that waitlist down to, I heard, almost nothing, which is awesome. Thank you.
That is all Penny Chastain and her team. They're fantastic.
Real quick, I want to thank all three of you for, for lack of a better term, being able to pivot when, you know, just like Ms. Hepburn said, we talked about at the work session, maybe they don't know that this was science and you've already addressed that. All of these things show real active awareness of what's going on and how we can make changes quickly. I really am excited about the mentoring, the Big Brother kind of program. And so, thank you and I look forward to what comes next.
I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Dr. Dickinson. She has been instrumental in the curriculum work, our PLC work and supporting all of our science initiatives. So, just a huge thank you to the work that she has done for our department and the district.
All right, we will move on, sorry, we will move on to the social-emotional area and Dr. Map will take this first one. Yeah, so thinking about our climate of belonging and culture dignity across schools, I'm really going to focus in just on this here on 3.1.3 and really thinking about our work with focus groups. One of the things that I had the opportunity to work with our buildings with, really more so at the secondary levels, just because our students are more able to be engaged at those levels, is working with focus groups. And so, I had an opportunity to have 29 students that I had offered the opportunity to connect with throughout last year. We had multiple meetings throughout the year, you know, over lunch or during homeroom time to really understand their perspective of how we improve in terms of our climate and our sense of belonging throughout our organization and our schools. And really, from that, continued to work and meet with our principals. We have leveled meetings with our principals where we get to share that information and support our students to be able to get that information to them. And so, one of the things I definitely want to highlight that our work does is thinking about ACIB and our board policy in terms of the three questions of whom does this benefit? Does it differentially impact protected groups? And then what should be done to increase or eliminate disparities? And so, that's one of the things that I think that our work is able to do through always asking those questions. I know that I can think of multiple buildings where even in principal's offices, those are questions that they are asking in PLCs and throughout their processes of placement or of this or that, that they are asking those questions. It's really a big part of how even thinking about, one of the things that we did in our
uh, in our strategic plan is working to eliminate the barrier of transportation for early instrument music, for example. And so those are things, um, that those, that policy guides our work to continue to do better. Um, and that's a big part of what our, we get to do with our student focus groups is looking at those different things, policies, um, looking at things like our, um, our climate surveys and really being responsive to the things that we get to see within that. Uh, students being able to delete that, get that affirmation to principals as well. And so, um, you know, throughout my opportunities to connect with principals quarterly, um, in our work with D E I and, and H R, um, improvement of retention and recruitment, we get to really focus on how our students can truly be advocates in that work um, and really push our administrators to think and do differently. Um, one of the things, as Dr. Bailey said from before, is we had an opportunity to have, um, chaos, the keep healing and overcoming struggles. We had students and staff members that were trained, uh, in that program to support, uh, understanding of trauma and how to approach and respond to trauma. Um, that was training that was done last year. And then now those students and those teachers can truly be using those methods throughout this school year uh, and continuing to create more opportunities for more people to be, uh, responsive in that work. And so, uh, we're excited to continue to see that, that those things progress forward. Um, and then the last thing I will say is that I did remember my fourth one, which was that, uh, we use I statements. And so being able to speak from our own personal, uh, experience and not speaking for groups of people is, is a big part of what I get to have conversations about as I support the work with staff across our organization. So, um, that's three point one, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Bailey for three point two.
So one thing that I want to make sure we recognize is that this is year seven for me. And in every year, the board has definitely reaffirmed their commitment to the social emotional well-being of our students and our staff. And that has been done through multiple avenues, um, including in a huge chunk of this being included in our strategic plan, allocation of resources, staffing and, and support that's throughout. Um, and so this year, our social emotional team, um, including our counselors, our social workers, our, um, S E L coaches are gonna receive some continued targeted training from West County Psychological Associates to broaden their scope and, and their understanding. Uh, when you go through training to be a school counselor, y- you don't always get to practice some of the skills you get on the counseling side and you tend to be more on scheduling or documentation in some areas. And so coming back to, um, these folks that specialize in areas such as anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation and stress management, so that those folks can take that directly back into their practices and work with our students in the buildings on those specific areas. Um, we're also gonna offer, and I mentioned this before, but offer a parent learning series throughout the school year that's gonna be focused on a variety of topics, including the anxious generation, um, including a parent learning session on student anxiety and depression, signs of suicide, um, then also looking at things like overscheduling and how that can have an impact on students. And so we'll have that throughout the school year, some evenings, um, with, with some experts in those areas. I want to acknowledge that specific, uh, data in this, in this goal area is focused on reducing the number of students who receive multiple office referrals. We did have success. And so when we look at all of our discipline areas, this is a success area that we had. We saw a twenty percent decrease in the number of students that received multiple office referrals. We are nowhere near arriving, if that's how you're looking at that, um, but always staying focused on what that looks like. Uh, we'll continue to use our early warning system, but a lot of those same things that I said earlier about working with our I E P teams, working with our mentor program, looking at the data with our principals. Um, and again, I think personally adding that extra carve-out for a tardy in the discipline code will allow us to have clarity around that data. Um, even when I was doing the, the work today, I mean, it was hard to pull up which ones were specifically for that and which ones weren't. Um, and some of these students had gotten multiple office referrals because they got tardies in first semester and then tardies in second semester. Um, and so this will give us more clarity around that for better problem solving. Um, we also use the M T S S processes not just for academic data, but for our behavior and social emotional data. And every building goes through that protocol that, uh, Ms. Locke described, um, around problem solving for students with behavioral concerns. We'll continue that direct collaboration with the C bit team that we mentioned earlier. Um, our S E L coaches will be working with a Universal's checklist, like we said. And then, um, the S E L coaches will be going to South by Southwest to get some additional training to bring back to provide for our teachers. One of the areas that we have them focus on is what we would call our tier one support. So they're not just going in when a classroom teacher is having a problem with a specific student, but really looking at ways teachers can provide support for all their students around their rules, routines, procedures, processes, protocols and things that they do in their typical classroom. They work very closely with all of our new teachers and have done so for several years, so they get that connection. And then teachers can reach out and sometimes they are assigned to get help by their principals as well based on specific learning needs that the teacher has around their evaluation or around the support they need in the classroom. Um, and we will also work with our behavior support team through S S D around behavior intervention plans, functional analysis around behavior and implementing those supports for our students. Actually get to hear from this end now for a second.
Good evening, board. I'm excited to get involved. Uh, here I get a slide to talk about the adults and how we, uh, make sure that they are feeling as supported. Uh, you know, we, we put our adults in the best position to feel engaged, healthy and happy. And if that's not the case, then we know we're gonna miss a step when they're working with our students. So this is, uh, very important. Obviously, I was here a month ago to talk to you about exit survey ratings. So just a quick recap of the things that you already know that we're committed to doing with this work. Need to get more participation. Uh, you saw a rate of participation in, uh, the presentation that I gave last month that, um, was at a, was at a low for five years. So that, that's a call to action for us to, to get that feedback from those of our, our staff members that are exiting, um, to combine that feedback, making sure that they have options to do, uh, in-person and online, depending on who's doing that. Ease of use could be online, but I think a lot of folks would take up the opportunity, um, to meet with one of us uh, to give us that feedback face-to-face and making sure all that information is calibrated and comes back to our data set, so that is all actionable. And then keeping an eye, uh, bless you, keeping an eye on the questions we're asking uh, to make sure that it really drills down into the things, um, that we want to find. So that's what we'll do with the survey, but with the short amount of time that I have with a live mic, I want to let you know a little sneak preview of the things that are coming out of the H R office. Because the reality is when we're measuring our success in an exit survey, it's a measurement of what has happened before that, right? So what does onboarding look like in Kirkwood, right? Are we offering opportunities for people to come in and feel engaged from the jump? Um, in the past, recent past, a lot of our onboarding has been online. And there, again, there's ease of use to that, but I, you know, seen in other districts that a, that a in-person onboarding session can be a great opportunity for people right away to feel valued, um, meeting and greeting people, not only in the H R department, but also in the, the relative neighborhood of Turner. Um, so that there may be some tours coming around, um, Monday mornings, just to, to, to sneak preview some of that. Uh, how are we facilitating stay interviews, right? Especially around the holidays, right? So we onboard, we're checking in on them, and then that stress comes. It's a first-year teacher or a new T A to this work or somebody that thought they wanted to work with kids and they realize, whoa, I'm working with kids now. You know, and they go back home for the holidays and then that uncle's in their ear about like, join me in sales, right? And what do we do to get those folks to remember that they get to work for kids, right? And the secret to never aging is to surround yourself with young people as long as you can, right? These are, these are bumper sticker mantras that we got to remember to get in the ear of our people that are just joining us so they don't come in and make a decision, a lack of support, hey, this isn't for me and I'm gonna check something else out career-wise, I'm gonna stay with this organization. We are a district that has worked hard to create outstanding benefits for folks. And jo- joining this organization and finding out about P P L, I mean, I'm, I'm just thrilled to be an ambassador for this program. Can't claim the hard work that happened to get here, but I sure, I sure will be, uh, letting people know about it, letting people know about our employee assistance program and all the great many things. Benefits are only as good as awareness that people have to access, right? Also making sure we communicate clearly our benefits to our people. Making sure we, uh, communicate clearly about how to obtain advanced degrees and options for its tuition reimbursement and clarifying those procedures for our staff so that they feel like that's a, a process that we can help them through. Um, what are we doing to ensure robust ment- robust mentorship at all levels? Um, how does H R begin to collaborate, as we've already done so with our C R D, uh, department, to really make a, a special, uh, when we're looking at service milestones, our retirement celebration, right? Which might sound like a misnomer, like you're talking about keeping people in the organization, they're retiring, right? People notice how you celebrate individuals as they're exiting the organization, even though they may be nowhere near retirement, right? So handling and celebrating our people throughout the continuum of this work. And then a- a- at the end of the day, when we're looking at, at the idea around the evaluative process and looking at a way to infuse additional coaching and feedback into the evaluative system, not just for our certified teachers, but efforts, our support staff as well. Um, that's work that I relish the opportunity to engage in here as I settle into Kirkwood here, finishing about month two. But, uh, again, you know what we're gonna do with the exit survey. I think the important part with the time that I have this evening is to let you know about all the many things that we'll be doing to ensure those survey ratings are high by the time that people engage with them. And I think that's the key to this work, so appreciate the time with slide three point three.
And the last part for our social emotional area is to look at the comprehensive wellness plan. And this focuses a lot on our student attendance, along with our overarching wellness plan. This year, we're implementing just new processes and procedures to address attendance issues. We don't have a major, major concern with it, but we do have a few students that did have some significant number of absences for a variety of reasons. Um, and so we've implemented just attendance committees at each building to look at that when students meet certain thresholds of attendance. Um, and just as a, a broad sense for the board, we look at ninety percent as a great threshold for us to set. In a hundred and sixty-eight school, uh, day year, that means that students are absent for sixteen or fewer times, which sounds like a lot. Um, but then if you're out for an entire week because of the flu or something else that comes up, that can add up fairly quickly. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're addressing those concerns when students hit certain thresholds. In addition, our social workers, uh, we're working closely with them to develop home visit protocols when it comes to attendance, when it comes to coming to school and those communications with, with families regarding attendance concerns. I will very openly tell you, one area that is a struggle for us in St. Louis County is that there's not a heavy emphasis on the court system for truancy. It, it doesn't fall at the top end of things. You probably know from experience, Ms. Shern, and, and not personally, by the way, for your job, by the way. So, uh, I had to make sure I cleared that up quickly. Um, but just thinking about our students, when we look at truancy, in some counties, you're able to just say, boom, truancy, file that, and that, the court system steps in. For St. Louis County, that's low on their priority area, um, and often gets kind of sent out to Jefferson County. So we hope we don't get to that point, but at, we, we have set thresholds for filing truancy if need be, um, working with our parents. But focusing on attendance, uh, those attendance committees, looking at the why and really what resources and support are needed, which is why our social workers are gonna be leading those and leading the, the work with that. And then the home visit protocol, really talking about, why are you missing school? What do you need from us? How can we help you? What support is it? What are the barriers that are in place? And identifying that and, and looking at resource allocation for that. Also thinking about our wellness plan, last year, our wellness committee and those that were present focused on learning about access to cell phones and social media and preparation to potential change for practices. Senate Bill sixty-eight changed that a little bit for us and, and accelerated and actually put in parameters that may have been different than where we would have landed, um, with our wellness committee. So we'll circle back with that team. Um, one of the things that, that we've done each year is have students that are a part of that wellness committee from middle school all the way through senior year. And those students have been directly asked, identify some of the areas of concern that you have and some barriers and struggles that you have, and that leads the focus of the work throughout the school year. Um, prior outcomes of this approach, uh, have included increasing the number of counselors at the elementary level, increasing the number of social workers available, adding an intensive support counselor at the high school, uh, who is a licensed professional counselor. Partnering with various agencies, including Chad's Coalition, to provide onsite specific therapeutic options for our students. And even if you've been to the high school commons, the, the change in furniture in the high school commons was spearheaded by students in the wellness committee, I think you were at that meeting. And, and talking about, uh, not being able to write on the tabletops because they were, they were more built for outdoor. And so just the student work and the student movement on that and the students being able to come back and work with us on it, uh, want to highlight that and emphasize that that wellness committee has had some tangible outcomes. And again, to thank the board for their continuous support, um, around our students and our staff and their wellness um, and their social emotional support. You've allocated resources, we've allocated staff and we've seen results. If you look at the Sabres data, we have seen continuous decreases in the students who are identified at risk. Um, and we've seen students take advantage of, um, our counselors and our therapeutic supports that are at school. They've got a full caseload, um, of students that they work very closely with and family. So, uh, that kind of wraps up our social emotional area. These again are just some summaries of, of those, and we will take any questions that you have.
Before we move to questions, just in case this meeting goes beyond eight-thirty, we need a motion to, um, extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. We need a motion.
So move, Kathy.
Second, Hepburn.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Ms. Neiman?
Thank you. I'll try and make it quick. Um, so just wanted to clarify, really happy to hear that the, um, students identified at risk for social emotional concerns has been decreasing. You can see that trend from, since twenty-twenty-three, which is so hugely important. Um, I'm curious as to why it looks like it's decreased over time. And our goal, um, kind of at the top explanation is that it will decrease by two percent or more, um, year, year to year. But from twenty-twenty-five, our number was seven point nine percent, and then in twenty-twenty-six, it's seven point seven. So that's not a two percent decrease. I'm just curious as to how we landed on seven point seven for our goal.
Two percent of the original number, so it takes seven point nine, two percent of that, and that's what we subtracted out.
Uh, okay, I'm thinking seven minus two is
That's okay.
five, but got it, okay.
If you have questions, that means everybody has questions and we're happy to explain. So yeah, all of the goals, even from the academic side, are based on that starting number and the percent of that starting number.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Um, and then the only other point I just want to make is really appreciate the surveys and us continuing to, um, gauge feedback, both from our students, from our staff, from our families, on place of belonging, how they're feeling. Um, as you mentioned, Dr. Rich, we had some, uh, response rates that we want to increase and we want to continue to, to gauge that because there is a lot of opportunity for enhancing that place of belonging. And that's super important for that right foundation for learning. So really appreciate you staying on top of that and would encourage us to continue to, to look at that and, and encourage engagement. Thanks.
Ms. Hepburn?
Dr. Map, I haven't gotten to talk about focus groups in forever, but I love focus groups. It is my favorite way to get qualitative data. I loved hearing you talk about your focus groups. I think we can get so much good information out of those conversations, especially for the kind of work that you do. I just, that was awesome to hear about. Um, Dr. Bailey, I'm super excited and have been very excited about the parent education series that you have been talking about. I think that that does so much for our community and I, I hope we get a good turnout and good engagement on that. Um, I will definitely be letting people know about those, uh, those seminars and stuff because I think that's gonna be great. I, I think the mental health portion of our strategic plan is so, so important. Um, I was, I was one of the people, I was one of the people in the focus groups when they were developing the past five-year strategic plan. And one of the things that I just kept telling them was that mental, the mental health, um, needs of our students needs to be a priority because it's the issues with anxiety and depression and suicidal ideation is just, we have to make sure we keep on top of it. And so I appreciate that work and I, I don't want us to, you know, let go of that. Um, Dr. Rich, I just want to say thank you for using some of your time to talk about your brand and, you know, the energy that you're bringing and what kind of your vision is for some of the ways that we can, um, you know, do some things to make our staff feel more welcome and excited to be here. I think that some of the things you mentioned sound so good to me and I'm just really excited to hear about it. So I really appreciate you sharing those things. That's it.
Mr. Kathy, Ms. Shern?
Echoing, I had student, uh, focus groups as well, but I wanted to understand more like the timeline, how this works. Is long-term like just throughout the school year? Um, because I thought the, the, uh, student focus groups were a very good idea. I know we're continuously doing that, but like first thirty days, identifying the questions, then sixty days, developing a process for gaining permission. But then it was long-term to get the students. And I was just curious as to why the long spent, like, will it take that long and when in the actual?
Yeah, no, we had, we had multiple meetings throughout last school year and the plan would be that those students who were part of it would continue and then maybe we would add in any new students to that group moving forward. But no, we did meet multiple times throughout last year and that would be, the goal is to meet throughout the year, yes.
Got you. So just overall with the plan, the long-term, does that mean like
Yeah, so typically, yes, great question, because I think that's threaded all throughout the plan there. As long-term is usually if it's ninety or more days. And then if it's gonna be more of a sustained situation as opposed to just, yep, we've met that particular benchmark. Um, and something that then tends to inform the following year. This being year five of that, that's, that's not necessarily the case for future, but you're correct. Long-term is something that's usually longer, longer than one semester, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Not to bring restorative practices back, but I do think it would be helpful to, uh, maybe have, you know, like a written out, and maybe you all have this. to maybe have, you know, like a written out, and maybe you all have this, but a written out PD plan on, on the restorative practices. Because it's, it begins to become hard to understand when you're like half day, full day, this gets it, that, you know? And so I just want to ensure that we've got a comprehensive plan for this.
Ms. Pangborn.
Sure. Dr. Rich, I really appreciate some of your ideas. Like Ms. Hepburn already highlighted, I'm excited to see how some of them can really make, you know, whether it's the exit surveys or the stay interviews or, you know, our retention numbers increase. So just really excited about some of those ideas. And Dr. Bailey, I really appreciate how we are using the input from our wellness committee. You know, years ago, we had the committee and they talked and they did things, but we're actually taking things and implementing them. And you highlighted some really good examples that I think are more opportunities to celebrate that work. So my question is, when does the wellness committee meet this year? And do we have an idea of what maybe some of the conversations are gearing towards? Or is that still TBD?
The dates are TBD, yes. And so I will say that the conversations for our students typically center around the anxiety. I'm very interested to find out by the time, by the time we meet with them, they'll have had at least a month without cellphone access. So I'm curious as to what that looks like. And that may actually drive some of the discussions that we've had. Students themselves have identified just student teacher relationships is one area they'd like to improve, but anxiety took a little bit precedent over that. So that may be an area to continue to circle back to for our students is just, how do we keep building that relationship side? Not just in the classroom, but high school students in particular were like, man, I just want them to know me and know who I am as they become adults themselves as well. So I have a feeling that since that's come up in a few years before, that those will be kind of centered areas, yes.
That's, that's great. And Dr. Rumpus, and as a board member, I personally, I'm using my iVoice, Dr. Math. I personally would love to know, you know, when those ideas are brought forth? Because if there are resources that are required that can help us achieve this, this goal and move the needle, that's something I'm really interested in, so. Thank you.
I'll make it quick because we don't want to extend the meeting again. I just want to thank you all. Dr. Rich, I, I love the excitement and your energy and being proactive with staff. We want to have fewer and fewer people who take the exit survey. Not that they're not taking it, but they're not even needing to take it. So I like that. Thank you.
Hi. So I wanted to highlight a couple of the initiatives we have through 4.1. And I will try to speak quickly so you can get your questions in. One, and we talked briefly about this in the work session, but I did want to highlight that we've been working with our communications committee specifically about messaging around Let's Talk. I know that's a tool that we've talked about quite a bit with the board as we've rolled it out. And we made some changes, even that implemented at the beginning of the school year, both with our messaging and with our website presence. And wanted to share that for the beginning of the school year, we've seen a 31% increase in usage when compared to the same period of time last school year. So very much want to thank the communications committee for their feedback because it was very effective. And in case it comes up, I, the dates for the communications committee are also TBD, but we will be scheduling those soon, so I'll get ahead of that question. I also wanted to highlight the in-person and community engagement opportunities that we're going to be sharing in the coming weeks. We'll have a lot more information, but just, I'm sure the board is aware, but wanted to share publicly that our first one will be on September 12th, ahead of the first home football game at Kirkwood High School. From 5:00 to 6:30, we'll be out on the field hockey and lacrosse field at Kirkwood High School. Dr. Rumpus is hosting an opportunity for the community to come out. The special guests can include members of the Board of Education, members of leadership here at the district. And we'll be doing several of those over the next several months at different times and places and locations to really kind of, hopefully, the public can have opportunities to engage and schedule that works best for them. So those are some highlights for 4.1. Also, 4.2, I wanted to preview the fact that we will have a style guide. And as we go through our typical process around the communications plan, we'll also be sharing with the board for your information, some of that work we've done on the style guide. You may remember, we've had like a one or two pager that has highlighted some things. Make sure we use the right Pantone red and what are the fonts that we utilize? But we have a much more extensive style guide that we've worked on. It started with work in my office and then we engaged over the summer with our buildings just to make sure as we tightened some of the understanding of our branding, we also weren't restricting some of the work that happens in our buildings. But you may have even seen some new business cards. You're going to be seeing some updated letterhead. All of that is part of that style guide effort and really kind of tightening and updating our branding while still keeping it really familiar with our community. And then also for 4.2, I wanted to highlight that we are expanding the use of Smore in our district to make it more available to our teachers to use for classroom communication. We've talked for several years about wanting to provide a little bit more consistent access when it comes to the communication going out and what families are seeing. And we still have work in that area, but one thing that Smore does is it makes it easy for teachers to create classroom communication. It looks nice. It typically works well across technology. And then it also has translation and ADA accessibility features that you can't get from a typical email. So we have expanded that just this year to make it, we did a pilot last year. This year, we expanded it to allow all teachers and we've seen about 80 new accounts open up just by offering it. And so we are excited to see where that goes. Well, we'll need to continue offering some tech support because we've had those sorts of questions. And also very positive, we've had teachers who previously have spent their own funds or maybe even building funds on Smore accounts. And now the district's able to take on that cost and absorb it for all educators. Pass it off to my friend, Mr. Cook.
So by my count, I have 17 minutes left to talk about the last slide before we run out of time. Just really want to focus and stress something that came out in the work session and focus on 4.3.3 there. Goal that we have to find some outside the box ways to make our community patrons aware of the ongoing scope of work that it takes to maintain our facilities that are aging and just celebrating, I think, the work that's gone in from our maintenance team, but also just to stress through infographics and video, what that looks like and, and how challenging that can be in the financial and human resources that go into that. So we've, we've done some work to collect some of that data already from our maintenance team and looking forward to celebrating that and recognizing that and raising awareness there over the coming weeks through social media and other means. But that, I think, is the focus for us when it comes to that. I think we're always looking to share that financial information. And the property tax rate calculator not quite as exciting as maybe some of the other parts there. But we, we certainly want to not grow lax in those efforts as well. Those days are coming up soon, the property tax calculation, so.
Ms. Pangborn.
Perfect. I'm so excited about the proactive engagement opportunities that we are doing this year. I love that we're going to go out to people and not when we're asking stuff of them, but just being there, so really excited for that. Thank you for making that happen. I also really appreciate your example of the sharing of Let's Talk. And again, whether it's education or just awareness that that is an opportunity. And I think that really showcases something else that we had talked about for both you, Ms. Diedrich and Mr. Cook, about celebrating and educating on so many different things. Your example about facilities and, you know, how much it costs and like, I didn't know we could make that fun, but I'm actually excited about it. So I think these are great examples that really can, you know, share more about what we're doing. So I'm very excited about our communications plan. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews. Ms. Shern.
Thank you for this. And I'm just going to give my last little comments for everything. I want to say that we are doing some amazing things in the district for our students and our staff and want to continue that as always, we have room to grow. But looking forward to planning and getting the new strategic plan going to build upon what we've done. So, thank you.
Mr. Kathy.
Yeah, I'll build upon that with my kind of closing statement. So Dr. Rumpus, I wanted you to know that I really appreciate your opening statement because it kind of covered and encompassed a lot of the points that I was going to make. And I appreciate you recognizing where we have areas of opportunity. But I also want to make a point that, you know, I referenced the longitudinal academic data slides, which have become some of my favorites. One, because they tell a great story and they show a lot of tremendous progress that's taken place over the past five years. So I want to, I want to recognize that. But I do want to make a point and, and these kind of closing comments will be directed mainly at my fellow board members in that tonight, we, in consent, we approve the RFP for our strategic plan, which is to me, an incredibly exciting opportunity. I just want us to, to learn as we go through that process, what we've talked about, I've talked about for the past three years now, from the goal setting perspective in that we really commit to, and this is just my opinion, but I would encourage everybody to strongly consider that a component of our upcoming 2631 plan includes kind of a final destination. Where do we want to be? Tangible, quantifiable goals. But a part of that is, it's really hard to commit to that. And it's going to take a lot of courage from us to kind of put a stake in the ground and say, this is where we want to be. So that when we're reviewing where we are in 2031, we know whether or not we got there. So I want to recognize that that's a, an ask, something I would encourage, but that's going to be really hard work to determine what it is. And it's going to take a lot of courage and backbone frankly, to say, this is where we want to be and know that we might come up short. But at least we know where we want to head. So I want to make that point. And then in closing, you know, the goals are what they are. I will say this just because I got the mic now. I think where we've got some of our academic goals for this year, continue to reinforce the need that we as a board commit to dedicating agenda time to discussing the achievement gap. I'm in my third year on the board, we have not done that yet. So I think tonight's goals further, you know, express the need to do that by seeing where we're at. So I appreciate all the work and thank you.
Ms. Hepburn.
Yeah, I, I'm with a lot of the comments that Mr. Kathy just said. In fact, the upcoming strategic plan is one of the reasons I ran to be on the board when I did because I was really excited to be a part of that process. Because I think there's a, I mean, I think the goals in the strategic plan were great goals with values that align with our community's values. I think some of the structure and goals and methods are things that I'm looking forward to us taking learning from this plan and, and looking at. And I'm very excited about that work and I agree, it's going to be, you know, a project. In terms of tonight, I want to say, Steph, I'm looking forward to being on the communications committee with you again and doing more great work. And Mr. Cook, I'm so excited to have you still. It was nice that I got to hear a little bit from you tonight, so that was fun. And then just for the cabinet in general, I feel like tonight's presentation, the tone was great. I feel like there was a lot of deep dives on specific things, a lot of really detailed explanations of things, a lot of specific next steps and actions that you guys outlined for us. And I just thought that the information you brought tonight was really helpful, really informative, specific and clear. And I just really appreciate you bringing that information forward tonight, so thank you.
Ms. Neiman.
Thanks. And just to add on to that as well, I know it was earlier mentioned that there was a very good responsiveness from the work session to tonight. So just want to reiterate that great progress too. Would love to see us as we work, as we move together as both a board and a cabinet and moving into the next strategic plan, continue this great collaboration and continue to push each other to continue to be better for the staff and the students and the families of the district. So really looking forward to working with you all as we set the next strategic plan and looking forward to hitting all of these goals out of the ballpark. Thanks.
Everyone has said a lot of what I want to say, so I'm going to be more broad. I want to thank you all for being so proactive and sharing the information that you did. This is my fourth one of these and I feel like I've gotten more information and understand things better than I ever have before with these. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rumpus, for your leadership, for, you know, helping the cabinet, encouraging the cabinet to be vulnerable and to let us know what's going on. It's really important and we, it's an exciting year ahead and I can't wait. So now we have to vote to approve. I did not forget, Laura. You knew I was going to. So we have a motion to approve the strategic plan. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
I'll just reiterate one, thanking the team. This is a new team. I mean, three of us, brand new and the team coming together and being able to have open conversations and challenge one another. And again, this team's been doing the work for four years already. And so to their willingness to look at what we're doing and what's working, what's not, and what we could do better is fantastic. And I appreciate that you acknowledged that they did take feedback from the work session and incorporated that where we could. And again, really owning our data and this is our reality and we look forward to that strategic plan as well. And we're also excited that starting at the September work session, that our schools will get to come. Because the reality is, we can do this planning at a district level and then there are hundreds of people living this work each and every day in a very direct impactful way for our students. And so we will start with the Early Childhood Center in September, getting to share and highlight what they're doing at the school level and then we'll work through all of our schools over the next four months. Thank you.
Okay, future events. Labor Day is Monday, no school. The 8th is the board awards and honors and the board work session that Dr. Rumpus just referenced. September 12th is our first little meet and greet. I hope a lot of us can be there and then stay for the big football win. And then September 13th, the Green Tree Parade. So that's always a lot of fun. I look forward to seeing you all there. Board tax rate hearing on September 22nd and unified nightlights on the 30th. So with that, we are adjourned. Seven minutes to go.